Hey colleagues, if you can kindly turn your cameras back on. We're gonna get started. We are here for legislative oversight hearing, LO 21-0003, budget briefing, Baltimore City Public School System Fiscal Year 2021 closeout. And we have Chief of Staff Allison Perkins Cohen and we have the CFO Chris Doherty. Allison, I'm gonna turn it over to you if you have any brief introductory remarks and then we'll get going.
I actually, I actually don't really have any introductory remarks. Appreciate you all making time for us and happy to be here. And I'm gonna turn it over to Chris Doherty so we can move through this pretty quickly.
That was a perfect example of brief introductory remarks. Thank you. Take it away.
Thank you very much Chairman Costello and other council members. I will also try to keep it brief and information packed. My name is Chris Doherty. I'm the CFO of City Schools. And we're along with Courtney Desabey, the Budget Director. We're here to present briefly on our FY 21 year end closeout. Before I pass it over to Mr. Desabey who quarterbacked the closeout process extremely well directly, I will say top line is that our auditors for our annual audit of our consolidated annual financial statements gave us their highest opinion. It's an unmodified opinion, which is the highest auditors can give. They had no findings. Our auditors, by the way, are Clifton Larson Allen, also known as CLA National Firm. And we work with their Baltimore and Northern Virginia offices. So as Mr. Desabey walks through some of the summary numbers, just know that all of this was part of a, another clean audit for City Schools, which we're very proud of. And we have three months after the close of our fiscal year. Statutorily required to close our books and we did. And these are the top line summary for your oversight and information for the now closed FY 21 year. Short and sweet, Mr. Desabey, I was, and over to you.
All right. Good day, everyone. Can you see the presentation screen?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Mr. Desabey, what's your, your position title at City Schools?
Sure. I'm Courtney Desabey. I'm the Special Assistant to the Chief Financial Officer and the Acting Budget Director for City Schools.
Got it. Thank you, sir. Take it away.
Okay. No problem. All right. So we're gonna walk through the general fund fiscal year 21 closeouts. Our fiscal year, of course, is from July 1st, 2020 to June 30th, 2021. And we're gonna be looking at the general fund revenues, expenditures, and the variance between those two and uses. So first section is on general fund revenue by sources. So you can see our State of Maryland sources, 857 million, budgeted 851 million actual. City of Baltimore, 287, 347. Same for the actual. Our federal sources budgeted 5.4 million. The actual amount was 8.088 million. And this is one of the categories that, you know, is somewhat of a projection. Last year, if you recall, we actually budgeted about 5.4, but it came in about 2 million. So this is in the opposite direction. In terms of our local sources, we have interest earnings, which were budgeted a million, came in at 24,000. Our other revenue budgeted 27.5 and came in 11.9. And our other financing sources, which is the contribution from fund balance to our operating budget, 15.3 million, and we used 15.3 million. So that gave us a total funding budget amount of 1.19 billion and the actual amount of 1.17 for a variance of just over $19 million. Our next slide here is on the expenditures. And, you know, as Chris Doherty noted, you know, there was a little bit of uncertainty with fiscal year 21. You know, where this was a year that was, you know, fully, you know, within the COVID parameters, both from beginning to end. So we did want to maintain a lot of flexibility during the course of the year. And we did have a certain level of, you know, I guess discomfort with how the fiscal year would turn out in terms of expenditures. So some of that is reflected here, but it ended up being much closer than what we, we projected in terms of our changes in expenditures. So first category is salary and wages. So budgeted at 628 million, came in at about 616. We have fringe benefits of 230 million, came at 229. Contractual services, where we see our biggest variance, and that's unsurprising. We have a lot of contractual services that were not able to be performed because of the environment this year. In addition to the fact that we actively participated in moving, you know, things, items that we could onto some of our grant funding in order to relieve the general fund, which is why you're seeing a bigger variance in the contractual services. Materials and supplies budgeted at 32.6 and the actual amount was 24.1. Our utilities and charges, which incorporates everything from, you know, water, gas, electric, internet, telephone, et cetera, budgeted at 63 million, came at 61. Equipment budgeted 5.6, actuals of 5.2. And debt service, which is, you know, fairly consistent, budgeted at 2.3, came in at 20.8. Sorry, 20.3 and came in 20.8. And our transfers budgeted at 31.2 and came in at 19. And contingency reserve, this is the balance of contingency reserve. Contingency reserve once used, of course, moves as budget to the other categories where it's expended, which is why you don't see expenditures and actuals for contingency reserve. So total expenditures, 1.193, as mentioned, you know, it matches the revenue figure budgeted. The actual amount, 1.19, so a variance of 74.6 million. So the aforementioned revenue variance and expense variances, you know, combined to give us a balance of 55.198 million. And what we have here is the application to assigned fund balance items for that 55.198 item. So just as in the prior fiscal year, we had an amount allocated for the fiscal year 22 operating budget from assigned fund balance. So that's the 18.63 million. We have 12 million as a supplement for food services, since we're still not serving meal capacity at the way that we had pre-pandemic. There's 20.49 million allocated for technology and connectivity support. This is largely for devices and connectivity within schools and for students. And we have decentralized building controls, 3.4 million. This is initiative to provide centralized controls for HVAC and other equipment in school buildings and monitoring. And then the balance, 677,000 flowed into unassigned fund balance totaling up to that 55.198 million. And that is the final slide.
Can I just add, this is Chris Doherty again, Chairman Costello. Can I just add a few sentences to what Mr. Desabey said on his last slide?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. So as, as you, as you saw, when we, when we have a difference between budgeted revenues and actual expenditures, we have a decision to make on where to put those funds. It was the 55 million and change that, that was put up there in the last slide. And, and Courtney said it, but food service has been, we've been very proud at City Schools of serving as many meals as possible, even despite the ups and downs, to say the least, of COVID. Nevertheless, we, pre-pandemic, we served 90,000 meals or so a day, sometimes almost flirting with 100,000 meals a day. And because those meals get reimbursed by USDA, the, the food services folks are always battling to, to break even, not, not to, you know, to do more than break even necessarily, but to try to get reimbursed for all those meals from USDA. As our numbers have dipped in, you know, quite considerably because of, for obvious reasons, we have had to supplement with general funds, the enterprise funds that are the backbone of food services. So that explains an admittedly large number. And the other large number that was on that slide, and Courtney mentioned it briefly, was the technology. What we're finding is when we went to an augmented technology posture for our students, you know, because of the virtual learning, you can't really go back, right? You know, you can't, you can't, you can't give a child a computer that enhances his or her learning experience and then say, okay, well, it hasn't happened yet. But if and when the pandemic ever is behind us, we don't envision taking those things back. So we have increased, significant increased costs having to do with technology, both the devices, which can run the gamut, and connectivity. A lot of folks, we found through trial and error, were given a really good laptop, but they didn't have the connectivity where they lived in order to reliably connect. So I just wanted to give a little bit more context between or behind those two big numbers that made up the bulk, or at least the majority of the 55-ish million. Not that Courtney didn't say it, but I just wanted to add a few more sentences.
Thank you, sir. We'll start with colleagues, Councilman Dorsey. Any questions? Councilman Burnett?
Mr. Chair, can you come back to me in a minute, please?
Sure. Councilman Burnett?
I don't have any questions for this round.
Thank you. Council Vice President Middleton?
No questions at this time.
Thank you, Councilman Stokes?
No question.
Thank you, Councilwoman McCray?
No questions.
Thank you, Councilman Dorsey, Councilman Schleifer?
I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Dorsey? Councilwoman Ramos?
Sorry, Mr. Chair. My thing wouldn't come off mute. Are we gonna be hearing presentations from others from the school system as well?
Sorry, I don't understand.
Is this the full presentation we're gonna be hearing?
Yeah. So this is, um, this is quarterly oversight hearing. The quarter that we're covering is fiscal, is fiscal year 2021 quarter four. During the quarter four report, we do fiscal year closeout for the entire fiscal year. We usually do this about three, three months plus or minus after the end of the fiscal year so that everything, you know, has been reviewed and audited, et cetera. So this is, this, the, the topic is the closeout for fiscal year 2021.
Just checking that we weren't also expecting to hear from the CEO or anybody else from City Schools?
We, we don't, um, I don't, I don't recall a, a oversight hearing where we've had the CEO in the last five years in this committee. We, so there's not an expectation that the CEO is here? Yeah. I just want to make that clear that, that the CEO's presence, the CEO's not being present is something that I've specifically requested in the past because it's, it's simply not necessary. We're kind of, the committee's been more interested in hearing directly from the financial folks.
Great. Mr. Doherty? I guess I don't really know exactly how to ask this question. I'd like to get a sense of what the cost is related to the after-hours employment, an overnight employment of City Schools police. I recently had some correspondence with Melissa Broom on which the CEO and Chief of Staff were also copied on my questions as well as on the responses provided by Melissa. I was, to say the least, disappointed in what I learned through this correspondence about the reliance on City Schools police for essentially a wide range of duties for which they have no expertise. And in every case in which, you know, no expertise or shown effectiveness, and in which virtually every case that was mentioned, there's somebody else that does have expertise. Most notably is responding to cases of students searching computer lap, the city laptops for subjects related to self-harm, sending school police to, to intervene after hours when we could just as well be employing mental health professionals to do that. I don't understand why we would be putting police on the front line by paying them to be on the clock at all those hours rather than having professionals in that field of mental he, health, you know, mental health practitioners who are trained properly on call. I'd be interested to know what the budgetary impact would be of instead of having police officers on the clock at all hours, instead relying on, on-call duty for actual professionals?
Councilman, I'm gonna ask you to just, just wrap that up and summarize it in one sentence for us.
Yeah. Tell me how much it would cost, assume, assuming, assume less to actually put mental health practitioners on call instead of relying on police to do that? And similarly, for the other things that police are ostensibly doing during those hours, one officer patrolling 37 schools, by my math, that is three officers on any given night patrolling the entire 150-some schools, the buildings that the city owns, the city school system owns. I can't understand how that's an effective expenditure.
Councilman, my question is, so I'm gonna bifurcate that. Hold on, Councilman. I'm gonna bifurcate that. Repeat the first question and do it for me in one sentence, please.
One sentence. Tell me how much we could save by using mental health practitioners instead of cops?
Thank, okay. Put a pin in it. Allison Perkins Cohen, you can start off with the response from City Schools.
So, so thank you for the question, Councilman, and I appreciate the interest in this, this issue. We wouldn't save anything by, by what you're proposing would actually cost us more, which isn't the reason why we do it the way we do, but it would cost us more. We have to have police officers on duty in the evening to patrol our buildings. We get a lot of situations where buildings, we do general checks of buildings to make sure that they're tight, that they're secure. There are some buildings where sometimes we kind of know their issues, so we, we do surveillance of those buildings. And then we get alarms that go off. We might get a, you know, an indication that a door is, is open or that there's an alarm gone off. Police officers will then respond to that building to make sure that the building is, that there's nobody inside the building to secure the building. If something did happen, like a door got somehow, maybe somebody did do something with the door. We also, so security alarms go off. We have had fires and, and after-hours or sprinkler systems that malfunction. Sometimes flooding will, so we have officers who have keys that will help to make sure that what's going on and from a facility's perspective. So that's the main thing that officers do, and that's an essential function that we need officers to do in the evening. If we were officers also, which I think Councilman is referring to, respond to our Go Guardian program. So our Go Guardian program is a program that's very innovative across the city, across the country that identifies students who are on City School Systems who are doing searches related to suicide. How do I commit suicide? Or looking for techniques of how to commit suicide? What officers do in those situations in the off-hours during the day when that happens, our counselors will connect with students and, and make contact with those students. If that occurs in the off-hours, what officers will do is go and, and try to first reach out to the family by the phone numbers we have to see if they can connect with them that way. If they can't, then we will go to knock on the door. And we have, through that process, successfully intervened in a number of cases with students who actively needed help, who were actively considering harming themselves. We've recently had conversations. I've spoken with them. Professor Holly Wilcox, who's a member of the State Board of Education, who's also a Hopkins professor whose expertise is suicide, who reached out to me because she is so impressed with the work that we've done with Go Guardian and the impact that it has had on young people who were very seriously, in very serious mental health crises, who needed intervention. Also, she relayed to me conversations she's had with an emergency room doctor, who's also responded to these, to these students. And in the nine that that doctor has known about, those students, for the most part, were students who had no connection with the mental health system. They were not on anybody's radar screen, and they were severely ill, and they needed support. And, and so the intervention that occurred was life-changing for them, life-saving. In one case, the student needed immediately medical assistance. And so that, that has been a really successful program. And what I'm hearing from the, through, through those two communications is that the parents in all those cases were incredibly grateful, had been just overwhelmingly grateful for the intervention. And I know as a parent myself, that if my child, and I, I have children who are still adolescents, if they were looking, if they were searching their computer for suicide, the nature of the kind of depression associated with suicide is that they would be very unlikely to, to tell their parent that they were doing that. And so if I had somebody to knock on my door and let me know that was going on, I would be eternally, eternally grateful for that support. And so we, I know we've been reached out to by NIH, who's very interested in this practice and would like to hold us, and Clark County, Nevada, is also has a similar practice. Clark County, Nevada, was the subject of a New York Times article about the severe increase in suicide that has occurred during the pandemic because of the isolation associated with the pandemic. We've seen the effects of the pandemic on the mental health of our students in, as they, during the last year, and as they've returned to school. And also in Boston, there's a similar approach. And so this is something we, is, we're very proud of. And our police officers have a lot of training in de-escalation, in restorative practices. And we very intentionally have selected officers who, through our selection process, through our training process, to our, through our deployment process, who have very strong relationships with students. We see it in all kinds of ways in the outcomes of our school police. We are in model nationally in terms of our school police. We've reduced our number of arrests in our school police because of this, this way that we've select, train, and deploy our officers. We've seen change in the arrest rate of ours in our schools from something like, I don't remember the numbers exactly, but just if you just have to go a few years back to we were in the neighborhood of 600 or more arrests every year to, I think last year we had 31 or, or 41. So that, that is the result of very intentional work and training and selection of officers who have relationships with students. And so we're very proud of that work and very proud of this, the involvement in those students who, whose parents have been very grateful about the interaction.
Councilman Dorsey, anything else?
I, yeah, I mean, I still don't believe that we have to employ police officers all night long, that they have to be the ones that respond. And I'm sure that it's great when it works out, but I'm not looking forward to when it doesn't. I don't, they're not trained professionals in, they're not mental health practitioners. Like, there's no debating that, unless they are. I mean, I'm not gonna compare de-escalation training to a four, a four-year degree in, you know, fields of mental health. I'm just not gonna do that. And, um, you know, from, from, I guess if it's gonna, if it's gonna cost us more, I, to, to have the most appropriate people responding, I, I just wonder what other arrangement might be possible. If we're saying that we absolutely, look, I mean, we heard about fire alarms and flooding. That has nothing to do with policing. You're talking about somebody who happens to have keys for a building, you know, being able to call on somebody who has keys for a building. That doesn't need to be a police officer. That could be anybody who has keys to a building. The fire department will respond if there's a fire or, you know, fire alarm or flooding or whatever. That's not a policing issue.
So, Councilman, it sounds like you have a disagreement on policy.
Yes, I do. And it has to do with how we're spending money in order to achieve substance, you know, results that I think could be better if we spent money differently. So it's a budgetary, it's a budgetary policy.
You may consider asking the Chief of Staff to set up a meeting for you with the CEO and/or with the school board because that's not a matter that's gonna get resolved today because the people in the room today don't have the authority to make the policy change that, that you're seeking.
I appreciate that nothing's gonna be resolved today, but I think that it's an appropriate place for the concern to be raised as we approve a budget of money that goes to the school. And it's a concern of me as a person who votes on that budget.
Fair enough.
And we can certainly get information on how much we spend on the officers who work at night. I'm happy to do that as well as, as well as any estimates we think to have somebody on call. Like I said, during the day, we do, it's other people who respond. But at night, the people who are in our buildings and, and do have keys, to your point, Councilman Dorsey, and do, you know, that will also bring in our ops people if there's something that the ops people need to respond to. But they often don't have the keys. And again, there's other reasons. I mean, there's sometimes there's breaking and entry that occurs in our building. So that's, that's a police officer needs to be there for that. So it's a very small deployment. It's to, it's, you know, we, we are very judicious in the way we use those resources to respond to the emergencies that we see at night and make sure we have coverage when there, when those emergencies do occur. But they do occur. Alarms go off. There, our security alarms go off, and we need somebody to go respond, and that's a police officer. And sometimes even, I, I hear your point that yes, if it's a major fire, the police comes. But if it's a sprinkler system malfunctioning or a flooding issue, then the police go open it. And then often, somebody from our ops team has to go and actually repair it if there's a repair that's required.
Yep. So it sounds to me like, you know, those ops people could be the first people there. And similarly, on the rare occasion or whatever that there's a vandalism or breaking and entering, like any other building, we could, we could rely on the half-billion-dollar police budget that the City of Baltimore already has to respond to those things like anywhere else. I don't know.
We actually can't. I mean, unless it would take a change. Right now, the agreement is, because of the original separation agreement, is that, that when someone calls 911 for a school, or if there's an incident in a school, the school police come. So it would take some change to have the regular police come. And frankly, you know, off-hours, maybe we could talk about that, making sense. Our school police, again, have relationships with our students that are very, are really positive. And, and I think the arrest rates that you see, again, are unusual. Compare us to the county, compare us to Baltimore County, it's the arrest rate or any other, most other county. City and state. So, yeah. So anyway, like I said, we can, we can find that out too. We can find out some of the information about how, how often we're dealing with those types of alarm responses, but it is pretty common.
Councilman Dorsey, you good?
I'm good. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ramos?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and colleagues. I do have a couple of questions. One is, I saw that the presentation that was sent to us ahead of time is actually last year's. So can we have the current presentation? And that, that you have, because I, I just wanna look over it again. And then, so you have a, a fund balance of 55 million is what you were saying. In last year's presentation, it says 48. So where does that go afterwards? Does it come back to us in the general fund, or do you spend it elsewhere? And where are you gonna spend it?
Thank you, Councilwoman Ramos. On your first one, yes. Sorry for mistakenly sending you a previous presentation. We'll rectify that right away. And yes, what we tried to show in the last or second-to-last slide was how we allocated the 55 million dollars. If Courtney is still able to put up his screen from, or I have a side one here. I can show you. I can refer to it. We did 12 million to food services, as we discussed. A hefty, almost 20 and a half million dollars to technology, connectivity, devices and, and the like, hotspots and things like that, which is a continuation of a massive increase in allowing our students, both either because of the pandemic or for all the other reasons you'd like to have a functioning and well-connected computer at home for educational purposes. That's part of the expansion. That's part of the, uh, expansion of devices and connectivity for kids. We have, um, almost three and a half million in decentralized building controls. What, what that, a sentence or two more about that is as we, as we improve our buildings, both the Twenty-First Century Buildings or our own or additional efforts to modernize, sometimes what isn't included is an ability to monitor with the state-of-the-art technology such new buildings from, say, North Avenue. Uh, it, it winds up actually paying for itself at some point if you can maintain, um, both monitor and then maintain a steady environment, uh, from afar. We still, in lots of cases, go and, and open and close windows, uh, to, to, you know, old-fashioned way. And, uh, decentralized building controls is, is a more, um, efficient way to do that. So we put some, uh, of that fifty-five million aside for that. And the other, uh, financing sources is, is the general fund contribution to fund balance. So that's, uh, makes up the difference as well as some going to unassigned fund balance. So we tried to show you the, the categories there. And Courtney, if, if I'm leaving a, either a nuance or something fundamental out, um, by all means, uh, help me answer.
This is good. No, this is good detail. Thank you. Um, I, I didn't have the current.
I apologize for that.
So I, I do appreciate the, the detail, um, here. And given the hearing that, um, Chair Stokes had the other day about, um, school lunches, it's always good to see more money going into the school lunches piece. My students, um, are very passionate about this issue, and they did a phenomenal job last week. I do want to take this information back to them, uh, because we had learned that day that we, federal government only, uh, reimburses us four dollars and thirty-one cents per lunch, which means we're, uh, supplementing that. And so is this the full amount of food services? Again, I'm sorry, I don't have the current, um, thing. So you put twelve million back into food services, and then there was an additional allocation for, for food services. So you have, the school system puts in a good amount of money, um, although there's still a lot of, um, improvements to be made.
We do. And, and, um, last year's, if you, you know, if you unfortunately have last year's presentation in front of you because we sent it mistakenly, you'll see that last year there was a big contribution as well. It has been higher in this COVID period where we are proud that we didn't lay off any staff and we kept everyone very busy. The people were not paid to stay home in, in no way. But, um, as the meal served, uh, drops precipitously, our USDA revenue drops precipitously. And then, like you're indicating, we have to make up that difference somehow. And the last few years, it's been considerable, um, contributions from general fund. We hope to get back to a point, but we don't let, I, I don't, I was on that, I listened to that hearing as well and loved hearing the feedback from the students and also Liz Marquette's comments. We don't, we, we want to break even with the USDA's reimbursement rate, but we, I think, we, we don't let that dictate everything. In other words, we, we know that even in a typical year, and we look forward to having one of those again pretty soon, we still might be, you know, a couple percentage points below because we didn't let the break-even fact, you know, drive every decision. We want to have good, healthy, appealing meals. Uh, we want to get, uh, the supper, the snack, the lunch, uh, the breakfast. But these particular last years of, you know, five, you know, several million dollars a year to general funds, we have to change that because it's not sustainable.
Right, so I, no, I appreciate that. And I actually have more questions about the school lunch thing that I'll take offline, um, as well. And, uh, so thank you, Mr. Chair, for the opportunity to ask questions.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, this is Marguerite. Can I clarify something?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, last week, um, the presentation from last year's closeout fiscal year twenty was sent to the committee and council members. And, um, they never got a copy of the present presentation, which we are going to need eventually. So to, uh, that's for Chris, Christopher.
I'm mute, Chris.
Sorry, Ms. Karen, um, we will send that in within moments, and we apologize for the oversight on our part.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Stokes?
Yeah, real quick, um, the, um, the question is about the fifty-five million dollars. Can you explain what that money can be used for and what it can't be used for? Is there a way you can explain, because a lot of times that money has stipulations on it? So can somebody explain exactly what you can use it for and what you can't use it for? Thank you.
Yes, sir. Um, I will take a crack at, uh, this, Chris Dority, uh, Councilman Stokes. When, when those funds are available, the guiding language for making an assigned fund balance contribution is, is to have something that, um, is not, it, it has to, it has to have certain contours to it. In other words, for example, at one end of the spectrum, you couldn't put it in a, in a fund and have it, say, for, uh, unexpected eventualities, right? That, that wouldn't be, that would, that would be one end of the spectrum. And so you, you name something with estimates that are built up, uh, from the ground. So in this case, with food services, for example, we had a recent, um, real numbers of how much of a deficit to food services, because they rely on enterprise fund, but any, uh, underages have to be made up for general funds. So we build up a, a projection of how much something might need in the next year. And similarly with technology, connectivity, and support. So what that means is although it isn't, um, it isn't rock-solid, that in other words, uh, GAAP and, and GASB know that these are estimates of what will occur in a period. They know they don't have to be exact, but what they're very conscious of is not putting any, quote, extra money aside and just having it be for a general rainy day fund. It's separate from a rainy day fund in that regard. And at the same time, uh, they don't always work out. I mean, I, I doubt if the food services deficit in FY22 will be exactly twelve million dollars. And so when we need to draw on the money, we do a supplemental appropriation to the board, and we say, as we generally contemplated, uh, at the year-end closeout, we're going to be drawing some funds for this purpose. And if you, if, if a manager or, I mean, if an organization wanted to use it for another purpose, they would need separate, specific board approval to do that. You can't put money aside under GAAP and GASB for purpose X and then say, oops, we didn't wind up needing that, we're going to use it for purpose Y. Uh, it would have to go back into the, you know, general fund and then be approved in that regard. So these are, um, finance's best attempts with senior management to predict where we might need funds guided by most recent historical actual numbers. So it isn't really a, um, it isn't really, nor could it be, just a, uh, priorities we didn't have money for elsewhere. It's, um, expectation of costs of this magnitude in these categories to be used for this purpose. Uh, and if not, um, separate board approval would be required. I hope that's short and clear enough for your question, sir.
Yeah, and Mr. Chair, can I just do a follow-up?
Yes, sir.
Well, my question is, the money that we, you already, um, used, some of that money already, already you have listed. I'm not really talking about that. Is there, what other, in other words, what else can you do with that money besides where you're using it for now? Is it any other places you can put it and use it besides what you already allocated with, with, um, technology and food? I see that, but I'm saying, can that money be used for other things besides what you already have listed?
I think the short answer is, sir, it could be, but it would be subject to, um, an explanation of why it wasn't used for the purpose it was put in assigned fund balance for. And then, uh, so that would be one decision that the, the board and the CEO would need to, uh, approve. And then there would be a separate decision as to what it was being used for. So yes, I think, um, I think the answer is yes, monies that, that is set aside in a fund balance category for purpose X can sometimes be used for other things, subject to senior leadership and board approval.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I'd just like to add to that, you know, just for the clarification that, um, anything set aside in assigned fund balance is generally non-operational dollars, or it's not going to be used to like add staff or, or, you know, things that are part of your general operating budget. So it's for, you know, more project, one-time-related items.
Okay, I, I got that clarification now. Not for capital, only for, can you explain it again, so I can be clear? You said, what it would be used for, that one would be used for capital. Am I clear on that?
No, not capital. I said, non-operational, um, items. So things that are part of your general operating budget. The only exception to that is the other financing sources, which is, you know, a budgeted amount that you take aside and add for, you know, balancing the budget purposes. But general assigned fund balance items are non-operational items.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Colleagues, any other questions? All right, seeing none, uh, we are going to go into recess. Allison, uh, Chris, uh, and Courtney, want to thank you all for your strong fiscal stewardship at city schools. I look forward to seeing you in a couple of months for the, I'm not sure when the next date is, but you all have the date, uh, for the fiscal year twenty-two, uh, quarter one closeout. We're now in recess. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, councilmembers.
That's November ninth, Councilman, November ninth.